Yeah. Okay, looks grungy. Yeah.
And you just want to stay within about an inch or two of the mic either holding, you know, getting up to it or just holding it right nearby? Yep. Yes, we are. No, we're blocking that because it's a it's a public hearing. Sorry. Notice. Okay. It is a public hearing, yep. The, uh, yeah, I mean, so we don't have to do a secondary man. So the they did a mail. They did a mailing for their community meeting on the front end. And that's what I was asking a while ago, kind of the, we're not required to do a mailing for planning and zoning, although I just might do it anyway. And then there's a mailing for the Board of Commissioners final hearing. That's my understanding of the setup. So here we at 10:30? Oh, okay. Did I get those dates right? It's. Okay. For the, okay. Okay, maybe we'll just if you can just speak to that when it comes on. Okay.
Mention a pollen factory. You've never been to Georgia, then? Middle Georgia, right? Rainstorm. Looks like yellow paint's going in the gutter. There from Augusta. That's those non-urises. December mosquitoes. It can be.
I'll be I'll be forwarding that shortly. Right, right. I really wonder what, you know, just screen. Pretender. All right, fine.
Good morning, everyone. Planning and zoning commission meeting, April 14. I will convene. Thank y'all for being here, everybody. Here except John. I don't know if he's coming out in Sally call me since he's out of town. So let's have a moment of silence to start. Is there a motion to adopt?
Of course. Gambling. In one of these years, I'd learn how to do this now. Under section Roman numeral five B two, talking about Montrix sign ordinance signs are still initially considered by the zoning ordinance research committee. I think that should be Montrix sign ordinance committee. You are correct. Set me there.
I've got a change to add to the agenda. We need to swear in John Hooker and John has got. John, John Davie.
Oh, John, John Davie, I'm sorry.
But John, he John Hinkle needs to be sworn as well.
So Angie, would you mind swearing me and John? Then he can vote on the document.
That's right.
Congratulations, John. You go be chair of all the committees now. Okay, the minutes were circulated. Is there a motion to approve the minutes previously circulated? And they were revised one time. Actually, two circulations. That must be the second.
Very minor. You know, I deal in small details. On the on the second page, under topics priorities of 2022, second full paragraph near the end. Well, actually, the very last sentence, we're talking about the zoning ordinance research committee. And it has a sentence that will also be periodic updates to the P and Z Commission. And that is also mentioned again on the second page, first paragraph. I guess that'd be the third paragraph, third page, first paragraph. I don't think we discussed it under the zoning ordinance research committee. I think it was in that general follow up later. Where it's talking about the hillside development and so forth. So I would suggest is striking that last sentence. It's not a big deal. We can leave it in, but it's going to be duplicative.
So it's the last sentence that begins there will also be.
From the comprehensive zoning zone committee. Yes, I would just suggest deleting that.
Before we can take your motion, let's get the motion on the floor about the agenda. So. The minutes. So motion to approve the minutes. I'm in. So I can say, Dan has an amendment to delete the last sentence of the second full paragraph in the topics priorities from 2022.
Correct.
Is that second to that? Which one? It's in the minutes.
Minutes. Okay.
Somebody second thought. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All the favorites say hi. And then is is there a motion to approve the minutes? And. Previously mentioned.
Sub move.
Their second. Any discussion? Oh, yeah, sorry. We're on to the organization of the P and Z.
Uh, other than just the the notes that are reflected here, the my understanding from the town clerk that the county commission has until April 18th uh, to make a proactive move on appointing a new ETJ representative. Otherwise, uh, then the decision then reverts back to the town board commissioners. Is that correct? Okay.
The related to the question, do we want to recommend to the board if they go ahead and report? Al and I discussed that with Tom and Mason. They don't think they have the power to do that yet. And so they want to wait until after April 18th. And there is an inconsistency. We looked at it together between the statute and the ordinance. If the statute gives the board the power to, if there's no one residing in the ETJ that is willing to serve, it says that the London County can appoint someone from any county, but that's not the same thing that's provided in the ordinance. So they're going to clean up the ordinance and then they'll clean it up. But they thought that we're not comfortable with going ahead. So we'll just have to wait. That's right. We can switch back and forth.
Is there a timeframe on that? Will they talk about that Thursday or what? They'll wait until. Okay, so there'll be a meeting.
May.
Oh, okay. And next month.
Yes. Bill, they don't have any interest in appointing him tonight effective April 18th.
That's what I asked. Okay, P and Z topics and priorities. Scott, would you lead us through this?
Sure. So the first item, the stormwater ordinance, this is just information that's been previously shared on just some background work that's being done on updating the town's MS four permit compliance. That's being done by Mary Rodrick, a coworker of mine at Land of Sky Regional Council. She is on vacation currently, but I will check with her next week just to get a quick status update on that. And to date, there's no proposed action item on this. It's really just for information sharing.
Questions?
Um, also on the sign ordinance, um, there's still a pending US Supreme Court decision. Uh, so that's a sort of a hurry up and wait situation as well. Um, and I will make a note after this meeting to Dan's earlier comment on there being a separate sign ordinance subcommittee headed by John Hinkle.
And I checked the Supreme Court Tuesday, and nothing has come down yet.
Right. So it's hurry up and wait.
On that committee, I had John as chair.
So next item standing is the 2022 conference plan update. Uh, the steering committee has met twice now and there's a just a question that Commissioner or Chair Shai can bring up with the Commissioner if you like. And that's regarding the July 1st, 2022 deadline to have a the the language in the statute and my communication with the UNC school government is to have a reasonably maintained comprehensive plan as a nexus to having a zoning ordinance and to legally continue having zoning. It's there's been a lot of questions about what. It's, there's been a lot of questions about what, you know, what reasonably maintained means and how hard the deadline is and the legal implications of that. I've been in touch with the School of Government and the answer I've gotten is it depends and it's undefined typically or the, the working definition of reasonably maintained has been within five to 10 years. So that's five to 10 years from 2022. The town's current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2008, so that's a clear 14 years ago. The other discussion has been reasonably maintained for a degree of change in a community. So if you're in a Raleigh or a Charlotte, obviously the degree of change and the magnitude of change is much greater than a place like Montrite. One potential item of discussion that's come up has been for the town board of commissioners to potentially formally readopt the existing comprehensive plan. I suppose it's a somewhat, I don't know why I say performative measure, but it's, it's reaffirming, yes, we're still working from this conference and we acknowledge actively that we're updating that. So that's, that's my understanding of the, the discussion. Right.
With the lawyer to see, but that would be an easy one to do it and note in their resolution that they are considering.
Right.
So that's the way we'll.
Julie, you can note in the resolution, some of the, some of the conditions that we talked about, though, there hasn't been much change. And the, you know, the population, the college, MRA, is there any reason to note something like that?
Um, I don't see, I, I don't see any harm in doing that. I mean, I suppose if it's, if you're wanting to, or if they, the commission was wanting to try and elaborate a little bit more on the rationale. Sure. That's, you know, it's, it's, I mean, it's possible.
That's a good.
Bit of information they could add.
Exactly. If they could, if they could just seek clarification on whether that's a representation.
I think one thing Julie and I both have been to the planning meetings and one thing, an overall important issue was involving the community in that plan. And so I think it's really important that we have plenty of time to do that and not be rushed. And so adopting the existing would provide plenty of time.
And I think they've scheduled, am I right that they've scheduled community meetings in the summer? Is that in July?
I don't have, I didn't.
I haven't seen it scheduled yet.
I think something in June, maybe in the July.
I, I think that's been the general discussion, trying to sort of strike while the iron's hot in terms of the greatest number of potential people in the community at a given time. So we do have a.
Is that better? Can they? Great. Any other questions about that? Okay, Scott, continue.
So item D just highlights the zoning ordinance amendments research subcommittee that's been discussed to, to date. The current discussion and I suppose decision to date has been to put that committee's work or subcommittee's work on hold until the MRA lodge issue is fully resolved. The, there has been an announcement of an, an intent to file an appeal to the Montrite Board of Adjustments, previous decision with Duncan County Superior Court. The deadline to formally file that would be April twenty fifth, so yet to be determined. Just noting here, the subcommittee members and sort of three primary potential areas of research, zoning setbacks, non-conformities and the hillside development ordinance.
We'll come back to that in just a minute. Dan, do you want to talk anything about the schedule? I mean, if that, if it drags out for a year or two, you might even consider doing some.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll reevaluate after sort of whether they file the appeal or not. I think that'd make a big, big difference. I, I would also say, why don't just add, just for thorough, covering everything under the topics to be researched. And number four, I guess, could be other modifications, I would call them minor modifications that have come up as a result of, for one, the lodge controversy. We got some suggestions from you, Scott, from one of the members of the Board of Adjustment. And over time, I've had some council members and others have suggested things that we might want to look at again. And I'm keeping a little list entirely and I'm gonna type it up at some point and get it circulated, but there are other obviously miscellaneous things other than just non-conformities and zoning setbacks that, that we'll be looking at. Sort of a, but I'm calling it kind of a cleaning up of the, the ordinance that we adopted last year. We spent several years doing that and rushed to get something adopted by the deadline there at the end. And we discovered there are a few items that should be cleaned up and clarified and simplified perhaps. So it's a bit little tweaking, I call it.
Do you, do you want a working title to be a house, housekeeping item?
Well, I don't know, we need a term, but miscellaneous matters that have risen since the adoption of the last one.
And an example, that would be what came up with Alan.
Exactly. That's a good example, cleaning up the part about the ETJ representative. That's one of the things on the list.
Right. Any questions? I do want to say under the, it's listed under here, the hillside development ordinance. And I think if the, if the planning and zoning commission agrees, a better way to do that, so it could spend more time, is to point another subcommittee.
I fully support that, by the way.
Okay. And if y'all are willing to do that, I've asked Wade if he would be willing to chair that subcommittee and he's agreed to do that. And it was my intention, if y'all agree to do it, that Liz, you need to be on a subcommittee, so I was hoping you might do that. I think that puts everybody on a subcommittee. And I was gonna ask John Davie, but he's not here. And so I'll figure out somebody else to appoint, but.
That means you can volunteer him right now.
So, but the, on the first question, can someone move that the hillside development ordinance be considered by a separate subcommittee that will report back to this commission? Somebody.
Also moving would add support for that. Motion by saying, I recently read that, I don't know how many of you read it, word for word, but it is a very detailed, tactical, challenging document to read, for me at least. And I think Wade has expertise and I commend him as, as chair. I think that's a wise choice. And I, I do think it's something that a subcommittee could spend a lot of time on, especially going line by line and we can do the whole thing. It's a lot of technical detail. It's a challenge, so I commend it to that subcommittee.
There should be no issues related to the controversy over the lodge.
Correct.
Doesn't affect the lodge.
And I think that would be good too, to separate that and become the lodge.
And so y'all could get started on it too.
So I, I'll make such a motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And Liz, would you agree to serve on that committee? Great, thank you. And I'll, I'll get a third member and I think maybe I'll serve on that too, just ex officio, or whatever. But Wade would chair it and I think I'd like to serve on that too. Okay, anything else under topics to be researched by zoning ordinance research committee? Okay, any other business before we go to the next meeting? Well, we did keep Wade from talking, didn't we? Okay, the next meeting is May the twelfth at ten thirty. On that meeting, we are going to consider the conditional zoning request, which is up on Mississippi.
That's correct. The working address is one fifty nine, even though it's not currently addressed, so it's a vac, currently vacant lot between one fifty seven and one sixty one Mississippi Road.
And it's, it's a setback issue to reduce from ten to five feet and, or fifteen to ten feet. I can't remember which.
From fifteen to ten.
Fifteen to ten. And it's on, as you face it, it's on the left side, which would be what, Westerly?
Southwest.
Westerly. And I think that's it. I've talked to their lawyer and we've all agreed that this is a legislative procedure, not a quasi judicial procedure. So it'll be a little bit, will be a lot different from the way the Board of Adjustment handled the other claim involving the lodge.
Right, so very, very simply, conditional zoning is a legislative process. You all will review it for an advisory, up or down votes. And then that then goes on to the town board of commissioners for a final binding legislative vote up or down.
Sure.
So when you say legislative, you, you mean looking at the ordinance and saying, seeing what's permitted?
Yes, that's right. Making, and deciding whether we would grant an exception. Or, or variance, I guess is what.
Any direction on the, on the type of support or rationale that typically makes sense for a waiver?
I, I don't know. Scott may have. I know that they've had a community meeting.
Yeah, so the, the applicant had an initial community meeting with, you know, properties within two hundred and fifty feet, it was noticed. Typically, I mean, conditional zoning, it's used where you have a, you know, some kind of special or unique site constraint or something of the other. And it's essentially, it's a, it's a parallel prime, I mean, so a variance is a quasi judicial review by the Board of Adjustment. Typically, that's gotta be a showing of hardship where very unique circumstances. Conditional zoning, it doesn't necessarily require a showing of hardship. It's more a showing of uniqueness or what have you. So just kind of a quick differentiation there, but that's, it's a, it's similar to a variance, but it's a, it's a different animal in that it's legislative, not quasi judicial.
Will they be providing us information on that community meeting?
Sorry. Yes, I believe so. I've got, I will be sharing the, the full application with Paul shortly. I just haven't had quite enough time to review it yet. To my understanding, the community meeting, yeah, that was held, I guess roughly a month ago, so.
I remember reading something about the.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, background special might be helpful, Julie and Liz, especially for all of us. To my knowledge, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first conditional zoning application that any of us have dealt with because it was just added to the zoning ordinance as a result of the rewrite last year. Prior to that, there was no such thing as a conditional zoning.
There was no use of.
In Montrite.
Conditionally, yeah, they're correct. There was no use of conditional zoning.
Correct. And what a condition is only really is, is creating a very small new zoning district. I mean, you have your R ones and the institutional zones and so forth. This is a request to create a special zoning, a conditional zoning district that is only one lot. If that makes sense. You're, you're creating a new zoning classification for this one lot.
That's why you said it was legislative.
That's right, that's right. And, and historically, the perspective, which came from some pushing that, did, is what happens when somebody wants to do something that doesn't fit the zoning ordinance and not to approve it is nonsensical.
And it doesn't fit a variance either.
Yeah, so, so that.
It's a third way.
I mean, if everybody, that's smart to approve and stupid not to, then that was a way. It does have a limitation. It's only good for one year. And so you've got to make sure you don't get held up on any other permit.
Yeah, Wade's right. It creates another option for people to use, be able to use a piece of property that might be challenging for lots of reasons. It may not fit and can do the variance. It's not a technical variance, the hardship and all that, as Scott said, but it's just another option.
It's a very common tool across the state, especially in mid-sized to larger cities.
Yeah.
And we're grateful to Dan and Mason Blake particularly for working on this and putting it into the zoning amendments. I did talk to Mr. Noor and he's, I do believe they have, they did file a, a variance application first, did they not?
That was.
And that was withdrawn.
Previous, previous to my, my.
And they just decided to draw it. This would be a better way to do it. Okay, so we will meet then on the twelfth. Is there any other public comment or comment from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Would you come up to the microphone?
While he's coming up, I was just gonna ask Scott. I noticed on here it's got ten thirty to two PM. Is that, are you anticipating it to take that long? Oh, I'm sorry.
So the, so that, that, that time was blocked both for the P and Z Commission's regular business and because it is, it is a public hearing. It's just blocking that, at least that amount of time.
I was just curious if.
It, it, it's a public, I'll answer and say it's a public hearing.
Okay.
We may not have much business, but we do want to have a, well, although we are a regular quarter, I guess that would be the quarter. So we may not have any business for that, but we wanted to just make sure we had it set aside.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious.
I, I just want to clarify, you'll be sending us like a packet?
Yes, yeah.
And if you can get that out reasonably quickly so people have time to.
Certainly.
No pressure. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Anybody on the, the zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? It is adjourned. Thank y'all very much.